Yeah, we were having trouble getting on Facebook Live, but.
It's working now, Joe.
You got it?
Okay. All right, we're good.
I am not good yet, but.
Okay, turn your phone, Joe.
One more try here. That just means they gotta hold it for.
We're holding just a second.
Ms. Johnny May, can you hear us? No, she's not muted. Ms. Johnny May, can you hear us?
I hear you, can you hear me?
Um, cut, Jack, cut the TV off. Try talking to him, Ms. Johnny.
Oh, uh, Jay. Microphone turned on in the stand.
Yes. I can, I can hear you all.
Hear you all. Yep, I.
Ted.
I'm even there.
Johnny May, just one more time, if you would, say something.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Okay.
Okay. Before I open the public hearing, I'm gonna read from our ordinance, from our public hearing ordinance. Uh, town council shall hold public hearings for those matters required by law and may hold public hearings for any purpose council deems appropriate. Public hearings shall be advertised as required by law with notices and agenda publicly posted twenty-four hours before the hearing. A public hearing is understood to be a forum for people interested in this subject matter to present information to town council for its consideration as it deliberates an issue. It is not a forum for debate or argument between members of the council and opponents or proponents or each other. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. The time allowed to any one speaker may be increased or decreased by a majority vote of council. By a majority vote, council may also allow groups of citizens to join together for longer presentations under special circumstances. One speaker may not defer his or her allotted time to another speaker. The presiding officer may terminate a presentation which addresses the same information as presented by a previous speaker to avoid continuous repetition of information. Such speakers shall be encouraged to simply state their agreement with a previous speaker and bring new information to the subject. Public hearings will be held before a regular meeting, but may be held at a time separate from other meetings of town council. Public hearings will be orderly, allowing all who wish to speak to do so without interruption. The presiding officer will take necessary measures to assure all citizens who wish to be heard or allowed to speak. Council members may not speak as an opponent or proponent at any public hearing. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for ordinance to annex point seven-three acres owned by Lynn H. Goodman at all and located along Mitchell Street into the town limits of Batesburg-Lisville, Lexington County, TMS number zero-zero-five-nine-zero-zero dash zero-six dash zero-two-six at seven-oh-four P M. Are there any speakers on this public hearing?
So which, which line is that? They gonna pull that?
I'm not even on yet. If there are none, I will close this public hearing for the ordinance to annex point seven-three acres owned by Lynn H. Goodman at all and located along Mitchell Street into the town limits of Batesburg-Lisville, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-zero-zero dash zero-six dash zero-two-six. Seven-oh-five. At this time, I will open the public hearing for ordinance to rezone two parcels of property consisting of fourteen-point-five acres owned by Lynn H. Goodman at all and located northeast of Mitchell Street from R-one, single-family residential to C-two, office and institutional commercial, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-zero-zero dash zero-six dash zero-two-five and zero-zero-five-nine-zero-zero dash zero-six dash zero-two-six. Seven-oh-five. Are there any speakers?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir. Please start.
Okay. I'm, I'm here to speak.
Um, sir, real quick, if you would, state your name. Thank you.
Yes, I'm, uh, I am Brian Elliott, sir. I have a residency here on Mitchell Street as well as Mount Pleasant, South Carolina. Uh, you don't see me quite as often as many others because the moment I graduated from college, the Defense Department took me and, uh, allowed me to retire at least once. And I had cut back and was spending more time here, but, uh, the coronavirus, I was, uh, brought back in full-time to work out logistics. Hopefully, this will pass and I'll be able to retire and resume retirement like a lot of you. But I'm out here today to speak. I've read the petitions and I've reviewed them closely. I want to thank Ms. Patricia for providing me the documents to review. And I want to speak specifically about the rezoning of the R-one, single-family residential to the C-two mixed-commercial usage. A few months back, I was here on a civil request and the petition was pulled because the property was outside the city limits or for some other reason, so I'm back here again.
About two minutes left, sir.
Okay, I would like it to be known that I'd like to believe I'm a good neighbor and a friend of the family and the petitioners, but there's things I need to say. I'm against this rezoning then and I'm against the rezoning now. The documents are inaccurate and misleading as well. This property is not bounded by Southerlin Avenue as it indicates and it is only bounded by a closed unincorporated road as well as a residential Mitchell Street. Uh, this property is blocked. The fourteen-some-odd acres, the only access to this land is on residential Mitchell Street to, uh, parcel land, fourteen acres. I, um, refer back to that, that the access is bounded by my home on two complete sides as well as the Beaton Bowes home on two complete sides. And it, any access would be between our two residential homes and it would bring a lot of unwanted, uh, traffic and issues. This property is not across the street from the library as it indicates and it does back up the Walmart, but there is no access in the Walmart area, so once again, the only access is Mitchell Street. Uh, it says that this would be a nice transition between commercial land and, uh, single residential area. Uh, it's a nice transition only if you don't border the land, but I do and the Beaton Bowes do. So the transition would actually impact us and not the petitioners whatsoever. And so they have the protected of my property buffering any kind of noise, trespassing, and unwelcome theft. I, so I am against this. I don't know if there's ever been an economic analysis done on this commercial land, not from a revenue standpoint.
You're in three minutes, sir, go ahead and just wrap up your sentence, please.
I, I will, but it is, it, the impact is from fire and rescue and everything else that would, uh, cause a negative impact to that road as well as the two single residential families that live there.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Sir. Seven, no, there are no, there's no, there's no, this is a public hearing. Shall I read the instructions again? I'll read them all. Would you like me to read them again?
Yeah, 'cause I think we can't even ask questions.
No, we cannot. I just, sorry. Sorry, we can't. We cannot. We cannot. Moving on, that is seven-oh-nine.
Well, I got a question, not for you, but for.
We are starting.
I got a question for that. The gentleman said that.
We're not having a discussion now, Mr. Kane, you're out of order. We're having public hearings, there's no discussion with a form of council right now on what you're doing. You cannot do this. I'm sorry. We're going to have a public hearing, we cannot have a public hearings. I just read it, sir.
Please read it again.
I will read it again.
Please do that. Read it again.
Would you like the whole thing or just the thing that says?
I want you to read the whole thing again, please, sir.
Okay.
Counselor, is that correct?
Town council shall hold public hearings for those matters required by law and may hold public hearings for any purpose council deems appropriate. Public hearings shall be advertised as required by law with notices and agenda publicly posted twenty-four hours before the hearing. A public hearing is understood to be a forum for people interested in the subject matter to be present information to town council for its consideration as it deliberates an issue. It is not a forum for debate or argument between members of the council and opponents or proponents or each other. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. The time allowed to any one speaker may be increased or decreased by a majority vote of council. By a majority vote, uh, council may also allow groups of citizens to join together for longer presentations under special circumstances. One speaker may not defer his or her allotted time to another speaker. The presiding officer may terminate a presentation which addresses the same information as presented by a previous speaker to avoid continuous repetition of information. Such speakers shall be encouraged to simply state their argument with a pre, their agreement with a previous speaker and bring new information to the subject. Public hearings will be held before a regular meeting, but may be held at a time separate from other meetings of town council. Public hearings will be orderly, allowing all who wish to speak to do so without interruption. The presiding officer will take necessary measures to assure all citizens who wish to be heard or allowed to speak. Council members may not speak as an opponent or proponent at any public hearing.
Okay, so I'm not.
I'm moving on to the next public hearing, Mr. Kane. Mr. Kane.
It does not say that I can't ask a question.
Mr. Kane. Mr. Kane, there, all of these things have second reading on the agenda and there will be time. Mr. Kane, there will be time to have discussion on these.
I'm not trying to have discussion, I wanted to ask a question in the.
Mr. Kane. Do we need a recess? Mr. Kane.
You can keep calling my name.
Mr. Kane, we're going to have a.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
It does not say that I can't ask a question.
Mr. Mayor. For the board. I, I think Mr. Kane and the rest of us have plenty of opportunity to ask questions in the agenda for.
But it doesn't say that I can't ask a question. Is that right? What does it say that I can't ask a question?
This is a time for the public hearing, we're not in discussion on anything, there's nothing.
It didn't say that I can't.
Mr. Kane, you can hold your questions for, Mr. Kane. I'm sorry, I have to address you.
Okay, you can call my name all you want, but it does not say that I can't ask a question.
You can have discussion on it at another time.
I'm not having discussion, I'm asking a question. Okay, so counselor, you're a parliamentarian, can, am I able to ask a question? I might ask a question with that.
My understanding is public hearing rules do not allow questions.
But that's not what the ordinance says.
We're. And that is exactly what the ordinance said.
It doesn't say that you can't ask questions. It said you can't have a debate.
We're not having a debate, Mr. Kane, I'm opening the second, the third public hearing.
For, uh, to ask a question?
Mr. Kane, I'm gonna open the next public hearing so that we.
The man said that. It's not, it's not, um, uh, the right ordinance on his face, so I'm asking a question. You can call my name all you want, but the ordinance doesn't say that I can't ask a damn question. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wise, give us a five and six on that.
It doesn't say, the ordinance is the ordinance on its face. On the face, on its face.
Members may not speak as an opponent or proponent.
I'm not asking, I'm not trying to speak as a opponent or opponent of the.
Mr. Kane, is there any way that your question and, and your question, can your question wait to debate on these items?
I want to ask, uh, so I have a question.
Is.
No, you can't wait, I just answered your question.
There's no speaking in, there's no speaking by council in a public hearing.
You can't say that, that's not what the ordinance says, you just read the damn thing twice. Can you not, can you not comprehend? It does not say that, it says you cannot be an opponent or proponent of. It doesn't say that you cannot speak, it didn't say that you can't ask a question with that, period. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gambrel.
For the board.
What is your for the board?
We're getting off the subject.
We're not, we're not, we're not saying something, he's made a bad.
No, Mr. Kane, I'm holding a public hearing and we're going to the third public hearing.
What you know about?
At this time, I'm opening up the public hearing for the ordinance to rezone properties located at two-five-nine West Church Street, Lexington County, TMS. I'm opening this public hearing. From R-three multifamily residential adjacent vacant property along West Church Street, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-one-eight zero-five dash zero-zero-seven. R-three multifamily residential and a portion of two-ten North Carolina Avenue, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-one-eight zero-five zero-zero-eight, R-two, two-family residential to C-one general commercial. This public hearing is now open at seven-fifteen. Are there any speakers? Thank you, state your name and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, my name is Jim Price with D G Development. I'm here along with Mr. Andy Jones, the owner of Sprint. We're here to ask for the results of one-point-five-eight acres that is an assemblage of R-three, R-two property to C-one. We're here to answer any and all questions you may have at that time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Are there any others?
They want to shut down the questions because they're about to use some leadership.
At this time, I will close the public hearing of ordinance to rezone properties located at two-five-nine West Church Street, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-one-eight zero-five zero-one-eight, R-three multifamily residential adjacent vacant parcel along West Church Street, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-one-eight zero-five zero-zero-seven. R-three multifamily residential and a portion of two-ten North Carolina Avenue, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-five-nine-one-eight zero-five zero-zero-eight, R-two two-family residential to C-one general commercial. The hearing is now closed. I'm now opening up public hearing ordinance to rezone six-twelve West Columbia Avenue consisting of point-seven-two acres, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-seven-zero-two-six dash zero-three dash zero-zero-three from C-one general commercial to C-one transitional commercial. We are now at seven-sixteen. Are there any speakers on this, uh, ordinance to rezone? Since there are no speakers, um, I will now close the ordinance to rezone six-twelve West Columbia Avenue consisting of point-seven-two acres, Lexington County, TMS zero-zero-seven, zero-two-six dash zero-three dash zero-zero-three from C-one general commercial to C-two transitional commercial. Uh, this public hearing has closed.
Counselor, if you can show me where it says that a council, a council person can't ask a question.
Before I start the meeting, is anyone here to say?
Counselor.
All right.
Do you have that, do you have that ordinance?
Huh?
Oh, y'all just, y'all just gonna make it up as you go. You read the thing twice, it doesn't say that you can't ask a question.
Would we, did, would council, would council like to have a recess or shall we open the meeting?
Now, open it up, don't we, till we get out of here.
Would we like to have a recess or shall we open the meeting? Any council members want a recess?
Mr. Mayor, let's move on, I think. Yeah, where the hell are you talking?
All right, here we go. At this time, I'd like to open the regular council meeting, May eleventh, seven PM, uh, seven eighteen P M, uh, Town Hall Conplex in Batesburg-Lisville. Um, at this time, uh, Councilman Pross, if you would, lead us an indication, please. Thank you. Stanford Pudge, complete. I'm Mr. Gambrel.
I must stand in honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited to justice for all.
Thanks, sir. Item four, approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Said.
Mr. Pross, second, but Mr. Gambrel, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
He read, cause he just read some that didn't. But it don't matter, he didn't.
District five? District four?
Yeah.
Thank you, district five?
Yeah.
Order, please. District six? Yep. District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm gonna be asked to do that.
All right.
Adoption of the minutes, regular council meeting, April thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
Don't say nothing else to him, he knows what he wants.
Mr. Pross, do I have a second? Mr. Gambrel? Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yeah.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, regular council meeting, uh, minutes from April thirteenth were approved. Special council meeting, April twenty-first, twenty-twenty minutes, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Pross.
Mr. Gambrel, do I have a second?
Yes.
Second, Ms. Etheridge, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yeah.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, special council meeting for April twenty-first have been approved. Moving on to item C, council work session, May fourth, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
You, Mr. Pross, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gambrel, any discussion? District one?
District one votes yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yeah.
Six?
Yeah.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, council work session minutes from May fourth have been approved. Uh, mayor's report, the next regular council meeting will be June the eighth, twenty-twenty. Uh, mark a calendar, uh, hopefully COVID will be gone. Um, item B, council committee reports, Central Midlands, uh, cog, Councilmember Hall.
Central Midlands cog did not meet in the month and there is no meeting scheduled for June at this time.
Thank you, sir. Environmental planning advisory com, committee, Councilmember Pross.
Environmental planning also did not meet in the month.
Thank you. And Joint Municipal Water and Sewer Commission did not meet, um, they did submit a, uh, brief report. Um, they are proceeding with construction of thirty-six inch transmission main into the plant, um, West Columbia and, uh, having a meeting with engineers soon about an elevated storage tank that is located behind Lowe's Food near Lexington High School. They continue to work on a, on a modified schedule because of COVID-nineteen. And, um, the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Mike Taylor emailed a report. And I'll, I'll read it verbatim. Needless to say, our daily lives changed the second week in March with COVID-nineteen. Since that date, the Batesburg-Lisville Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center has had to cancel the Relay for Life, uh, chamber dance, the South Carolina Poultry Festival Chamber Golf Tournament, the Peachtree twenty-three yard sale, and the Dreamcatcher events. Arts on the Ridge Summer Camps have also been canceled. Batesburg-Lisville Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Center has remained open during this time. Um, our focus has been to keep our membership and all businesses informed with the latest information and aid opportunities available. A new, uh, page on the website, Batesburg-Lisville Chamber dot org, uh, titled Coronavirus Updates contains all information received from the South Carolina State Chamber, Governor's Office, Small Business Administration, Social Security Administration, webinars, and conference calls. This page also gives our businesses the opportunity to inform the Chamber of their needs. Each week, the Chamber sends an email blast that contains the latest information to all members and those who have subscribed to our email. Chamber will continue to post COVID-nineteen information and community information as soon as it is received. Moving to item seven, public comment regarding items on the agenda, Miss Judy, do we have anyone? There's no one that appeared this evening, so we're moving to item eight. Um, unfinished business, second reading, ordinance to annex point seven-three acres owned by Lynn H. Goodman at all and located along Mitchell Street into the town limits of Batesburg-Lisville, uh, Lexington County, TMS fifty-nine-hundred-zero-six-zero-two-six, do I have a motion to approve second reading?
Mr. Wise, make a motion to approve, uh, annexation of this property.
Mr. Pross, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Wise, any discussion? District one?
District one votes yes.
Oh, thank you. District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five? District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Second reading for the ordinance to annex point seven-three acres owned by Lynn H. Goodman has been approved. Adopted, actually. Um, item P, second reading, ordinance to rezone two parcels of property consisting of fourteen-point-five acres owned by Lynn Goodman, um, located northeast of Mitchell Street from R-one to C-two and Lexington TMS is fifty-nine-hundred-zero-six-zero-two-five and fifty-nine-hundred-zero-six-zero-two-six. Do I have a motion to adopt second reading?
So moved.
Mr. Pross, do I have a second? Second. Mr. Gambrel, any discussion?
Didn't the man just say?
Mr. Kane.
Didn't the man just say that the ordinance on his face is not right, that it's a closed-ended property, is that the property he was just speaking of?
Yeah.
The gentleman, when I was trying to, to ask the question. Can you have him come back up and, uh, so I can ask him? The guy in the yellow shirt.
All right, that's fine.
Excuse me, I didn't hear what was being discussed.
The, the property that we were talking about, we, um, we zoned it, you said that it was, um, a dead-end property, there was no ingress, e, ingress on it, is that right? It's one-way in on that property, correct?
Uh, the way I look at the maps and the way they're designed, the only access into this property is off Mitchell Street. It is between my home and another residential home. It's about two-hundred feet between the two. There is another unincorporated dirt road that's an extension of Highland that's basically blocked or not used or not incorporated as a public street. The backside of the property backs up against Walmart, but I see no access on, from Highway twenty-three or through Walmart to get to this property. So whatever is intended to be built there can only be accessed beside my house. Does that answer?
That answered my question, but you also said that there was something, um, you also said that there was something that was wrong with the wording of the, of the ordinance, is that right?
The, the, the met plat is marked erroneously. It talks about it being adjacent to Southerlin Avenue. It is not adjacent to Southerlin Avenue. It is not across the street from the library. These are the things that I was, uh, attempting to suggest that it is an error.
And that. Thank you, sir. That's the language that came from the deed, the property description. If I could get some clarity from Ms. Pat.
Do it. Give it, put your name, Jane.
Wherever you'd like.
The property description that's on the ordinance actually came from this deed of distribution from Lexington County and it has the TMS numbers and it, the wording is south by Southerlin Avenue. It doesn't particularly say adjacent, well, let's see, all that certain piece of track of land containing fourteen-point-five-oh-three acres situated and being in the state of South Carolina and the town of Batesburg-Lisville and being bounded as follows, on the north by Holland Avenue, closed, and also by lands of PB Elliott, Asia, east by lands, okay, now it's only south. But if there is an error, the error is what stated, that's what the county, the surveyor that did the property, as it stated.
Can we, uh, get that corrected before we, um, or get some clarity on that before we go ahead and rezone that property? Particularly if it's between that, uh, that gentleman's, um, house and another house, he's talking about two-hundred feet, which is not a lot to have traffic going in, I don't know what they plan on doing in there, but it seems like we would, uh, want to get that right uh, before we did anything else. So at this, at this point, I'll move the table, second reading.
East by lands, uh, Walmart.
Until we can get some clarity on, uh, on the language in the, in the, um.
Does it say that it's?
On the deed of distribution.
It's closed on it, does it say that it's?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Or, or does it say? Um, it doesn't say it's closed. I think you all had discussed Kathy Street before.
Ms. Pat.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Mitchell had asked about the property being closed. I told her, I think you all had mentioned at the last meeting about Kathy Street.
But he's saying it's not, there is no, no, no right of.
But he's saying it's not, there is no, no, no right-of-way there to that area, from that area, so.
Other than what's in, what's between his houses, is there a right-of-way there?
And, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Hall has floor.
Maybe I can clarify this. Uh, the county records indicate that Cathy Street does not exist at that point. That property is the property of the Harriet, um, Crabs Estate. So therefore, it is, there is a stop sign located there, which I've questioned several times. But the property is actually private property deeded to Harriet. So, Mr. Kane is correct. Unfortunately, that, excuse me, I needed to add that, but is correct in his, uh, clarification, but there's only one.
Let's let Mr. Hall talk, please.
Would the zoning map help counsel? I have copies for counsel.
Would you all like to see the map to actually see the layout of the property and the access to and from the property?
Mr. Mayor, I have copies if you'd like them.
Mr. Prowse has a floor, if we could, everyone. Hold on one second, Mr. Prowse, I think we have sidebar.
Where's your, where's your house on here, sir?
Um.
This is, uh, this is the problem, right?
And we, Ms. Kane?
Mr. Pat.
All right. Mr. Hall has the floor.
No, Mr. Prowse has the floor.
Mr. Prowse, thank you, sir.
Just a quick clarification, um,
Could you hit the microphone a little bit there, Mr. Prowse?
Just a quick clarification to, uh, Mr. Kane's question of the description of the property. Uh, I believe the tax map numbers themselves, uh, give clear indication as to the location of the property. Uh, take, search on Lexington County Public Record website, um, does clearly indicate the specific properties and their accurate locations.
Did she just read that, Jason?
What's that?
Did she just read that and?
He's making, he's just making a statement. Let him talk, let him talk.
Well, he'll, he can.
Well, just let him talk.
Say what I said. Say what you said. Don't say to your mind what I said.
No, when you, I'm just making the point that you're asking for clarification on the description, the written description of the property relative to streets. I'm saying the tax map numbers clarify that.
Right, but not the description, right? The description as she read it, um, does not, uh, add up, right?
The description was a little bit vague, but it wasn't.
Mr. Mayor, I have something.
What's like a?
A legal description can be a legal description that was drafted many, many years ago by a surveyor and that property's not been surveyed since, but things have changed the road. So I'm sure there are many legal descriptions out there that aren't the same.
What law school did you graduate from?
I know that a survey can occur and in many years ago by things can change.
If you will, Ms. Kane, let him talk, please. Let's just, let's hear it now. Let's just hear it now.
If you put legal advice, I mean, you know, that's what we got to turn.
I, it's not legal advice. If we could let the town mayor speak on it, please.
Well, let him speak on it.
Thank you, thank you.
I'll stay here.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have to put a motion on the table.
You put a motion to table? We have a motion from Mr. Kane to table. Do we have a second?
I second it because you, it's not.
Second from Ms. Mitchell? Okay, now, any discussion? On the table.
If the man's saying.
We have a second, we have a first and a second on a, on a motion to table. Any discussion with motion to table?
Yeah, I think.
Okay, this isn't much, sorry, go ahead.
I asked the council to table this because until we get some clarification on the language, like Jason said, you know, it's vague. Jason said that, you know, it's, it's par for the course, but, you know, we're about to.
I say table it because he's saying that there is only one way in and that's beside his house. Who wants traffic coming in around their house every day, all day and all night? Nobody. So if you put a business back in here, he's gonna have traffic in his house all day, all night. So I don't think it's right.
Any other discussion on the motion to table?
Mr. Mayor, man, I would like to get some volunteer.
Volunteer on, on what issue?
On the issue you talking about.
On the motion to table.
Well, right now, we're in the motion to table.
I think the question was, there was a motion to approve what is second and we went into discussion, um, but then that motion's currently on the floor, so what, if you can table it.
It's on the floor, that's what you do.
Can that be done?
Okay, so that's the question. Next?
Are you saying that you can't?
Hold on one sec. No, he's asking, the question's being posed.
By whom?
Mr. Gambrell.
I'm not sure on the hierarchy of motions, but the original motion was to approve the ordinance and it was seconded and then we were in the debate stage.
Right, and it, and it's, I think it's fine to introduce the table at that time. We do have to vote on the table.
Are we, wait, hold on.
So we are in, we're in discussion on the table.
So you go over to the lawyer?
No.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, go ahead.
So we're in the vote to table. District one to table.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
District one?
District one votes yes.
District two?
No.
District three?
District three votes yes.
District four?
No.
District five?
Yes.
District six?
No.
District seven?
No.
District eight?
No.
And I vote no. Motion to table has failed. Um, we have a first and second, back to first and second on the second reading, any other discussion? District one, second reading, this is to approve the second reading ordinance to rezone the parcels, the fourteen point five acres. District one.
This is.
This is second reading to rezone the fourteen point five acres by Walmart.
What he's saying?
District one.
Yeah.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
District three votes no.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
No.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight? And mayor votes yes, the second reading is ordinance to rezone two parcels consisting of fourteen point five has passed. Moving on, second reading ordinance to rezone properties located at two five nine West Church Street, Lexington County TMS, uh, fifty-nine eighteen dash zero five dash zero eighteen. R three multifamily residential, uh, adjacent vacant property along West Church Street, Lexington TMS fifty-nine eighteen zero five zero zero seven, R three multifamily residential, and a portion of two ten North Carolina Avenue, Lexington County fifty, uh, TMS fifty-nine eighteen zero five dash zero zero eight, R two, uh, two family residential to C one general commercial. Do I have a motion to adopt?
Shall I move?
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Set.
Mr. Gambrell, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hall?
Is Mr. Rice and Mr. Adams available?
Uh, yes.
All right, I would, I have a few questions I'd like to.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Adams or Mr. Rice?
He wants to have a name.
Either one.
I'm, uh, Andy Jones, I'm president, CEO, and founder of Smithland.
Okay.
Unable to work the microphone, sorry.
That's quite all right. Exactly what will be located on this property?
It'll be a convenience store and currently a car wash and an ice house machine.
They have a car wash.
So there will be no additional businesses located at this location? Strictly a twenty-four seven convenience store?
Yes, sir, this is a twenty-four seven convenience store, yes, sir.
Alcoholic beverages?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bryce?
I'm the chair.
Yes, Mr. Number?
Uh, Mr. Bryce, uh, during the, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, you quoted that this was going to be a family-oriented business. Would you care to, uh, clarify that?
Uh, I sure will. It's, it's a very upscale, uh, establishment that is certainly family-oriented. You, uh, when you go to our stores, you will see that it is family-oriented. You will have men, women, children at the facility.
Can you, uh, also tell me what this store has to offer to the community as far as additional, uh, revenue for traffic and so forth? Or are we talking about, uh, consuming the existing revenues?
I'm sorry, I could not hear you.
All right, I'm, I'm asking, what positive feature does this addition have to the community?
The positive venue is it expands your tax base, it increases your jobs. Uh, we have done a traffic study on the property. Uh, it has no negligible effect on the road system. The level of service on each of the intersections that we have studied that were required by ASC D O T shows absolutely no change in the level of service.
Any other questions? Mr. Hall?
So you say it would be.
Ms. Etheridge?
You said it would be a car wash?
Yes, ma'am.
So what, I mean, because we have one located there and we have one located up this way. So what would be different from those to car wash?
It's a compatible, it's a compatible business to our business. Uh, it would be new and modern and, uh, we believe everyone would really like it.
So what would be the one you just drive through and it launches your car and you get out and spray or what?
That's my understanding. No, you, you drive through.
Any other discussion?
Sir, you said that you're gonna.
Ms. Kane?
You're gonna be creating jobs. How many jobs?
We think inside the store, there'll be fifteen employees within the confines of the building of the stretch store.
And how much are you, uh, paying the, uh, your employees?
I'll let Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Hold on one second.
Well, it, it's a couple of different things. First, we, we look and see.
The average, the average salary.
We start off a person at nine dollars an hour if you're an entry level clerk, entry level clerk. Our store managers make upwards of forty-five to fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
You put that in writing?
Sir?
You put the salaries in writing?
Yes, they're in the job descriptions, yes, sir.
And, now, you said that there is not any more traffic gonna be coming to that site, right?
Yes, sir, we did the traffic study.
Okay, so why would you want to make, put a business there if it's not gonna bring any more, um, any, any more customers? You're not gonna bring any more customers?
Well, yes, sir, but it's existing traffic. It's how we, it's how we base our business.
You're not gonna have, so what you're gonna do is cannibalize the other eleven or twelve gas stations that we already had? Because you're not bringing any new customers in, right?
That's, yes, sir, I mean, that, in essence, is kind of how the business works, yes, sir.
So we need another gas station that's not gonna bring any additional customers in, right? We have thirteen now or twelve now, so we need another one in that high traffic area like we need a hole in our head. Have you driven, have you driven down, um, the, uh, Highway twenty-three where you proposed to, um, to, uh, put that gas station?
Yes, sir, I've spent some time over here.
Have you tried to make a left turn, have you tried to make a left turn onto North Carolina Avenue from Highway twenty-three?
Uh, yes, sir, I have.
And you had no problem doing that?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay, well, you, you are a lucky one. I did it, um, a couple of times this week preparing for the meeting and it took me a minute and thirty just to go straight across. But trying to make that, uh, that left turn there, it's gonna be a nightmare for our citizens. Are you aware that, um, that the neighbors in that area don't want you there?
Well, I, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that I would say.
Hope is eternal, but I'm telling you, they don't want you there. Um, I don't want you there because I think it's gonna be, um.
Point of order is called by Mr. Prowse?
It's gonna be.
Mr. Prowse, what's your point of order?
I think we're getting off the top.
We're not getting off.
I'm not saying I'm gonna talk. Engineering and stuff like that.
I'm not talking to him about engineering. I'm talking to him about, about traffic.
They what?
Talking to him about traffic. Listen, uh, that's what he, he wanted with traffic, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna, I, I think we've had a, a quite a bit of, can we, um, right, I'm gonna rule on the point of order, I'm gonna say, Mr. Kane, can you shift to another question possibly? Is there any other question that you, it's getting a little bit negative and I would like to, it's our guest and if you have a question, Mr. Kane. Mr. Kane still has the floor, Ms. Mitchell, hold on one second. Mr. Kane, do you have any other questions that you'd like to ask?
What you not gonna do is tell me what questions to ask.
I'm not, I'm not telling you what questions, Mr. Kane.
Don't tell me how to characterize my questions to the man.
Well, let's be polite too, I guess, if, if you would.
I can be polite to him.
It'd be nice, Mr. Kane.
You kiss his ass, I'm not.
I'm really, Mr. Kane, please, just.
Okay, don't.
Mr. Kane, go ahead and ask your question. You still have the floor.
Sir, are you, um, understanding that the neighbors, uh, are concerned about the, uh, volume of traffic and the trash and noise? Not only that, your gas station, your, um, your, uh, exit butts up to or empties out into Mill Street, right? Okay, Mill Street is a residential, well, Mill Street is a resident, a quiet residential area. When you call, when you create all that congestion up there on twenty-three and North Carolina Avenue, the traffic is gonna spill over onto Mill Street, which is residential, um, families with, with young kids. You're about to create traffic all around, not just on twenty-three, but all throughout those, um, those, uh, adjoining neighborhoods. You're not gonna be a good, um, a good corporate neighbor. But I'm gonna turn that over to, I turn the floor back over to, to.
Ms. Mitchell, you have the floor.
I have, um, received, um, quite a few texts, uh, emails, um, from people in that area that don't want it. And, um, I don't know how they got me addressed because I don't be giving people my stuff. I don't like it and I don't like it, so they must have got it from here.
I'm sorry.
But anyway, people have been emailing me, telling me to do something because they don't want it. What can I do? I'm just one person and everybody overrides everything I say anyway. So my thing is they don't want it there. They, they email me like crazy. They don't want it. The people in that area.
Ma'am, I, I, the, the owner of the, the property behind us who we're buying from, um, they, they want us there.
Don't see if you're paying them right.
But let, let me tell you what we're gonna bring. We're gonna bring a top-notch.
We don't need any of our property needed.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Gambrell?
Call for, go ahead.
Question is a call for, we will end discussion unless there's anyone who doesn't want to end discussion.
I do not wish to end discussion.
Okay, so then we will vote whether or not to end discussion. Question has been called, so now we're voting to end discussion or not. District one to end discussion.
No. Oh, I'm in one, I'm sorry.
District one to end discussion and move to the vote. Or do you want to discuss this more?
I'm done, I mean, I mean, I'm done.
You want to get a discussion?
Yeah, we can have it.
So, yes, to end discussion, thank you. District two?
Yes.
District three?
No.
District four?
Yes.
District five? To end discussion, ma'am.
I feel that somebody got something to say. They should be allowed to say it, no.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
No.
And the mayor votes yes. Moving on to the vote for the second reading ordinance to rezone properties located at two five nine West Church Street. Um, we're going from R three multifamily residential to a C one general commercial. District one to approve second reading.
District one votes no.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
No.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
No.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
No.
And the mayor votes yes, second reading has passed. Moving on to item D.
Mr. Mayor, point of privilege. I would like to express my concern that, uh, I was not given an opportunity to represent my constituents and I would like to say a thank you to my fellow councilmen who deprived me of that privilege by cutting off discussion.
Point noted. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Second reading ordinance to rezone six twelve West Columbia Avenue consisting of point seven-two acres, Lexington County TMS seven zero two six dash zero three dash zero three from C one general commercial to C two transitional commercial. Do I have a motion to adopt second? commercial, do I have a motion to adopt second reading?
Yes, I move.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, any discussion on this rezoning?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three? District Three. District Four?
Yes.
District Five? District Five?
Yes.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, second reading for ordinance rezon six twelve West Columbia Avenue has been adopted, new business proclamation for Peace Officers Memorial Day twenty twenty, whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May fifteenth twenty twenty as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is Police Week, and whereas the day was set forth to honor officers who gave the ultimate sacrifice, the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund reported that one hundred and twenty-eight law enforcement officers lost their lives in the line of duty in twenty nineteen, it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of law enforcement, and that the law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation, and whereas federal, state, county, and municipal law enforcement agencies have grown into modern and scientific agencies which unceasingly provide a vital service, therefore be resolved by the mayor and town council of Batesburg-Leeville that May fifteenth twenty twenty is hereby declared to be Peace Officers Memorial Day, and that May tenth through sixteenth be declared Police Week in the town of Batesburg-Leeville, and that all citizens are urged to recognize fallen law enforcement officers, disabled law enforcement officers, as well as the law enforcement officers and their families who currently preserve the rights and security of all citizens. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation? Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, any discussion? District One?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three? District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
I guess so.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, proclamation has been adopted, council approval of committee appointments to the planning commission and board of zoning appeals, Councilman Lemon has recommended the reemployment of Ms. Betty Hartley, who resides within District Four, to the planning commission, and the reappointment of Mrs. Lily Gibbs to the board of zoning appeals for District Four, do I have a motion to approve her appointment?
Uh huh.
Ms. Lemon, thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Gamber, any discussion? District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
District Five?
I guess so.
District Six?
Yes.
District Seven?
Yes.
District Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes, your appointments have been approved, thank you, Ms. Lemon, I am C, and new business approval of contractor for the replacement of existing sidewalks along Peachtree Street and Charleston Avenue, and for roadway repair on Highway Drive in town, if you would, Mr. Hendricks, present.
Okay, everyone had a memo placed on their desk earlier, the memo that was sent out, well, the white paper that was sent out last week was amended today, the low bid for the roadway project withdrew his bid due to family concerns, so your updated memorandum shows that, as you recall, we received thirty-five thousand dollar C funds from Lexington County Transportation Committee, it went up, an RFP was put out, bids were open on May the first, sidewalk repairs include seven hundred and fifty feet on North Peachtree Street, that's from Railroad Avenue to Highway twenty-three, also on Charleston Avenue about two hundred feet by the district office, the low bid for that was three D dirt work to twenty-three thousand four fifty, we also had an RFP put out for the roadway repair for a full depth patch on Pinewood Drive, that's located right there by Creekside Apartments, that was about a forty foot by eight foot stretch where the road had been broken up, it is a town-owned road, those bids are, as you see, the low bid after the removal of Apex was CBD construction, six thousand five hundred dollars, if council approves it, we will commence immediately, anticipate getting started, putting their, their schedule in June with sixty to ninety days completion, weather permitted, one note, under recommendation, they're, they actually came in under our expectations, so there is an extra five thousand fifty dollars of funds available, what we would like to do is be able to use that for additional sidewalk repairs, we do have a list of some throughout the town that we would give with three D dirt works, they said that they would work with us and add to it to try to maximize that grant funding.
Where, where at?
Uh, we've identified a piece on, well, there's South Peachtree, there's Oak Street, there's Summerlin Avenue, where on Oak Street, there's some between Railroad Avenue on the south side and Highway one, going down towards your home, those are fairly new sidewalks, and on the left side of that road, it's new, but by Barnesville and Propane up to Faith Church, a lot of that is broken up, older sidewalk.
Right.
Yes, also Summerlin Avenue, there's numerous spots on that old sidewalk going out towards the high school, and the, there's a small piece down on South Peachtree, right toward Howard Street, but those are some areas that have been identified, we would not be able to do them all, but those are some areas that we would have them look at, and again, our recommendation is to approve the low bid of three D dirt works and the low bid of CBD construction for the roadway project, and then authorize, on top of the proposal, additional sidewalks to reach that maximum. Do I have any questions?
Yes, some of the, I have several concerns, of course, obviously, I've expressed my concerns before about Peachtree Street, we're gonna replace sidewalks, yet we have flooding in that area, concerned about the hydraulics, also concerned about the fact that if you don't cut roots and remove trees, you're just going to ask to have this reoccur, if I, if I may, let me show council, I'd like to show council what we're talking about.
That's fine, Mr. Hall.
Hold on, I'm right, sir?
No, sir, nope, we got all night, thank you. Is there, Chief, is there anyone else outside that needs this microphone? Mr.?
Just a paper, just a press.
Okay, Mr. Tony, can you hear us without being, being on this microphone?
He said yes.
Okay, thank you, I'd like to get that out of my hand.
All right, sir.
Yes.
I think you hear a lot better if you don't switch just in time.
Bob, I'm listening.
This is in two sections, let's address north, let's address North Peachtree Street.
And this about this relates to the contractor approving a contract?
Yes, it relates to the work specifications, you're asked simply to replace concrete at a level of four inches, I believe, in all of these locations, and if you'll look at the pictures, you can see that there's trees and other things infringing upon there, I'm just wondering if we intend to remove those as part of the contract?
Mr. Hendricks?
In your picture on, on one of the large pages, the bottom right picture, you can actually see where stumps were removed, two large trees that had damaged, a large portion of the sidewalks on Peachtree were taken down, I believe that was December.
They cut down five of those bigger, along Peachtree.
Some of it, the weather took down.
Yes, well, they came down in chunks, yes, but.
I mean, they, they had the road block, when that storm or something came, and they were, I mean, they didn't fight nobody, paying the toll.
Well, DOT did come finish, they did finish the job.
After they fell down. After they fell down.
But we are not going to address the storm drainage problem before we replace the sidewalks.
We are not, this is not for the storm drain, we have, you know, tried to address that with Lexington County, Councilman Brigham has requested information, and it has forwarded that with regards to the Highway twenty-three project with hopes of having some impact with the drainage there, but this does not impact that, that may go back to y'all's work session last week with the storm water infiltration, and, yeah, that's, that's gonna have to be, do you?
On, on that same page, the middle picture in the left-hand column shows a tree directly behind the drain section, it hasn't disrupted the sidewalk, but I'm not, I'm not a certified civil engineer, but I would think that it's impeding that water flow, however, so you're satisfied it's gonna be a long-term fix, and in my lifetime, we won't be readdressing this?
I certainly hope not, you know, the objective was to remove those large trees and a few of the small trees that were on that, toward, closest to the railroad.
My real concern is on Charleston Avenue.
Yes, sir.
This is directly adjacent to the White House or the administration office.
Yes.
Actually, the majority of the sidewalk that you're gonna repair is currently virtually a driveway.
Yes, sir.
And SC DOT specs, which I assume is what we're living by?
Yes, sir.
Requires five inches of concrete?
I believe it's six for driveways and four for.
Then, did our, did our RFP ask for six inches?
Yes, sir.
So we are going to do six inches there.
And three D dirt works did come out to the site and looked at it, what is recommended with the school district is that they put the stops, so they don't drive over the entire length of concrete, simply have an entrance and an exit where they would loop through, and that those sections would be.
So you're, either they are going to do it, or we're gonna put up a curb to prevent further damage.
That is, that is.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, any other questions? Before we, I have a motion, the staff prepared a motion in the back of the memorandum, it's very specific.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
We should let, we should let work, some problems, up to twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars, and they have CBD construction solutions, and we'll be prepared at a call for sixty-five.
On the motion, my best for Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Wise, any other discussion on this? District One?
Yes.
District Two?
Yes.
District Three?
District, we vote yes.
Four?
Yes.
District Five? Ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you, six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
I vote yes, motion has passed, manager report, Mr. Lucky, if you can give it from right there, if you don't mind.
Okay, as was stated earlier, in Mr. Taylor's memo that you read for the chamber, the Peachtree twenty-three yard sale that was scheduled for the first weekend in June has been canceled for this year, and just wanted to let the public know about that if they were not aware at this point, the next thing is the Lexington County Capital Penny referendum, projects were submitted on April thirtieth to Alliance Engineering, we did submit the six proposals that were discussed in the work session, or the special meeting, and those will be the ones that are evaluated by the Capital Penny Commission that has been organized, to recap the projects that were submitted, it was the resurfacing of Oak Street from Highway twenty-three to Highway one, resurfacing of Livingston Lane, Saluda Avenue resurfacing from the county line to Highway twenty-three intersection, Line Street resurfacing from the county line to the Five Points intersection, intersection improvements at Highway twenty-three and Mitchell Street to do some widening with turn lanes, and intersection improvement at Pine Street and Highway twenty-three, hopefully, the commission will begin meeting soon and discussing and ranking the submissions that they will recommend to county council, and as a reminder, we do have two local Batesburg Leesville members as a part of the six-person commission, and that being Mr. Alan Rizinger and Ms. Daphne Ridgell. The next item is on May twenty-second this month, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, the Batesburg Leesville High School will be doing their annual Panther Prowl, which is an annual event where the graduating seniors go to each school, and they parade down the hallways and say goodbye and thank you to the teachers, this year, though, they will not be able to go inside the schools and parade down the hallways, rather, they are going to do a vehicle parade through town, stopping at each school, and they'll have the teachers outside, and they are going to wave at them from vehicles, quick info on that, the parade will begin at the high school, to which it will proceed down Mitchell Drive, turn left on the Highway one, go down to South Lee Street, and stop at Elementary School, and then proceed to the middle school, they are expecting up to a hundred and twenty-six vehicles to possibly take part in this, this is something that the school district officials and the police department administration are working together on, to try and have a successful parade, a quick update on census twenty twenty, to give you some stats from today, we have had forty-eight in-town customers to date submit verification of completing their twenty-twenty census and receive the ten-dollar utility bill discount, as of yesterday, which were the latest numbers that I had, the national response is at fifty-eight point six percent, which is up ten percent from last month's council meeting, South Carolina is at fifty-three point three, which was up ten percent from forty-three at last month, our state is thirty-ninth out of fifty-two in overall response, Lexington County is at sixty point seven percent, which is up eleven percent from last month, and Lexington County is currently fourth out of forty-six counties in response rate, Saluda County is at forty-three point three percent, which is up eight percent from last month's council meeting, and is thirty-seventh out of forty-six counties, B and L, Batesburg Leesville is at fifty-two point eight percent, which is about less than one percent off the state average, which is up ten percent from forty-two point eight last month, and we are sixty-eighth out of two hundred and seventy-one municipalities in the state in our response rate, and last month, we were at eighty, eightieth out of two hundred and seventy-one, so, just to kind of show you where things stand with census twenty twenty, as a recap, we were at sixty-eight percent in the twenty-ten census, so we are about sixteen, fifteen to sixteen percent less at this point right now than what we did overall in twenty-ten.
And is that a deadline on census?
I think they were, I think they were hoping by the first of June to have the full majority of the responses done, but it's not completely done in June, by the first of June.
They postponed the door-to-door enumerators because of COVID-19, so that is still to happen, but it's not yet.
That, I would venture to say, I think they were hoping to have the people knocking on doors prior to June and have the response, the bulk of the responses by the first of June, but I don't know what they, I don't think they know how long they're standing that out at this point. All right, moving on to the town financial update, for, ended the month, April, general fund checking ended at one million one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, savings was at thirty-seven three fifty-one, police donations, five thousand six hundred and fifty-five, the fire department one percent fund at fourteen thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars, the court, twenty-nine thousand five hundred and two dollars, and victims assistance at six hundred and eighty-three dollars, for a total of non-utility funds, one million two hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty cent. Utility. Uh, utility fund checking um ended at seventy-three thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars. The utility fund reserve, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and one dollars. The capital improvement project and impact fee, one million five hundred and thirty-nine thousand three hundred and seven dollars. And the USDA debt service reserve at five hundred and sixty-four thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars. So total of all utility funds was two million nine hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The hos- hospitality tax checking by end of the month, April, ended at six hundred and sixty-four thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars, bringing the total of all funds for the town at four million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. Something I did on the second page um for council review, wasn't gonna go through every bit of this, was I lined ended the month, April for twenty-twenty up against ended the month, April for twenty-nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, all the way down to two thousand fifteen, just for comparison purposes. The general fund uh operating revenues for the year ended at three million three hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and five dollars, which is eighty percent of the operating revenues for the year. Operating expenses ended at eighty-five percent at three million five hundred and eighty thousand nine hundred dollars. Utility fund revenues ended at eighty-one percent at two million six hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars with operating expenses, two million five hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven at seventy-eight percent. The victims assistance fund, fifty-seven percent in the operating revenues at five thousand eight hundred and twenty-one and operating expenses eighty-three percent at eight thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. And the hospitality tax fund, we are just shy of a hundred percent on the four hundred and seventy-five thousand that we budgeted with four hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and four dollars brought in through the end of April and expenses being just forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-two cent, ten percent expenditures.
Thank you, sir. There is no executive session this evening, um, so no possible actions, um.
Mayor's order.
No discussion of the mayor, major of the manager's report?
No, you can, you can have, you you, if you have a question, Mr. Bob, go ahead, that's fine.
I am, I noticed that there's a significant drop in bank interest across all accounts. It's only one-third of what it has been. Is there a major change in the bank pay? Hospitality.
Hospitality tax uh in March was three hundred and eighty-seven dollars in interest. Uh, for April, it was a hundred and twenty-six thirty-five. I can go through the numbers, but the drop is across all accounts by approximately two, two-thirds.
I will take a look into that tomorrow and I will let you know um what I come up with on that.
Maybe this, maybe this is an issue that we need to address with a fiscal responsibility ordinance that would allow us to put our money in treasuries or other sources. Also, in March, we had, we pumped thirty-five million gallons of processed water, which was a seven million gallon bit blip. Pause, we have a break or something. Seven million gallon fluctuation between twenty-eight and thirty million gallons is.
How are we relating this to his items on the agenda, Mr. Bob?
I'm sorry, it was in the monthly report, I'm, uh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize if I'm out of, because I do have financial questions, but.
If you would, please.
Okay, we'll just, we'll land it.
Okay, no executive session this evening, uh, no possible actions by council. Um, item thirteen, potential agenda items for next month's meeting, do we have any at this time?
I do, I do want to do something on the agenda, I said.
Mr. Kane?
Yeah, I sent um everyone a uh email about the COVID nineteen camera.
I didn't get that.
Cause I don't email you.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Kane.
Yeah, okay, so everybody got that um email about COVID nineteen, about the thermal camera. At some point, we have to address the new normal that is, um, if we're gonna open up the the town in June, we're gonna take people's temperature, what's gonna be the policy? Council needs to to develop a policy of how we're gonna open up to the public and we don't use technology. Are we gonna use um, uh, you know, social distancing? It's gonna be our policy going forward, but anyway.
So a motion for the next agenda, Mr. Kane?
Ma'am, can I have a talk?
Yeah, I'm letting you talk.
No, you talk.
You you talk. Do you have a motion for an agenda item for the next meeting, Mr. Kane?
Forget it, man, forget it.
Every time somebody trying to say something, you feel like you need to, you need to clarify what the hell I'm saying?
No, I'm I'm not, I'm, this has potential agenda items for next month's meeting and and I heard what you said. Are you wanting to discuss that at next month's meeting, Mr. Kane?
No, no, go ahead, just.
Is that a motion to put that on the next month's meeting, Mr. Kane, yes or no?
Did I just say no?
Okay, no motion. All right, any other motions, put items on the agenda for next month's meeting? Have a motion to adjourn? Mr. Kane? Second. And Mr. Etheridge, any discussion? District one. District two.
Yes.
District three. District three, to adjourn. District three, to adjourn. District three, to adjourn. Thank you. District four.
Yes.
District five.
Of course.
Thank you. District six.
Yeah.
District seven.
Yes.
District eight.
Yes.
And I vote yes, we adjourn.